Ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and start the meeting. Sorry, we're a little bit late. We just got through a work session. I'd like to welcome everybody out to our city council meeting tonight. We'll start out with the prayer. I will give that prayer, and then after the prayer, we'll have the pledge by Nathan Makin. Our Father in heaven, as we come before thee this time, we are so very thankful for the comfortable circumstances we find ourselves in. We're so thankful for being able to live in Payson and be able to enjoy the surrounding area. Thankful, Father, for the leaders of this city and for the staff and employees and for all the citizens. And we ask thee, Father, this time, that we, as the governing body of Payson, will have thy blessing and help to make good decisions for the future of Payson City and its citizens. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please repeat the pledge of allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The audience, baby seat.
Thank you, Nathan. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and go with the consent agenda, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of February 21st, 2018, and resolution, municipal wastewater finding program collections section. Do we have a motion? I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the wastewater findings. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll go to de petitions and communications. We'll open the public forum. Anyone can speak on items that are not on the agenda. There is a time limit. If you please be mindful, three minutes, and we'll go to that point. Anyone in the audience who'd like to come up? Mike, come on up.
Members of the council, mayor, would like to make one point. We just had a work session, a public meeting. There was no time for the public to say anything about the budget. I think that we should be remiss if we don't allow that, so in the future, I hope you do that.
One thing in my defense is I said we could do it in this meeting too, so what...
Okay, well, I'm gonna do that, then. That's what I am talking about. I really feel strongly about the use of the extra funds that we have. You talked about on the budget session. By the way, you look all, or the previous meeting, council meeting, you all look really good on TV, because that's how I got to see it, except for Linda, who was somewhere else. But anyway, we really need to change the image of this council chamber and of the city offices. Now, my ideal thing is to knock this whole place down and build a new set of buildings totally, but that would be a $35 or $40 million deal. So, we need to have no more footloose. We need to really make this look professional. If you go anywhere in the valley or up in Salt Lake or Davis County and look at their council chambers, this really is tacky. And since I'm not on the council now, I can really say that. Second law, I would like to see development services get that extra position. In fact, I think Travis needs an engineer as well. You know, if we're really going to provide an image and get the job done, because in the election, during the election campaign, I heard a lot about what have you done in Payson in the last 80 years? And we can't get it done if we don't have the facilities and if we don't have the personnel to get it done. It's, you know, you need to bite the bullet and come up with those positions. I agree with Kirby Gunner, and it's, I don't know how you're gonna fight that battle with the citizens, but all you have to do is go take a look at Google Maps and go up very high, and you can see that probably 40 to 50 percent of Payson doesn't have Kirby Gunner. And it's gonna be a big problem for us unless you bite the bullet and get that going. North interchange. You have one shot at this. My last meeting when I was on the council, I made a comment about the fact, you really need to think about what that north interchange looks like. That includes having our sewage plant there, all the other facilities there. I know it's a lot of money, but take a look at what's happening in San Spanish Fork at that interchange. And all you have to do is be in an airplane and look at that interchange as you go past it, and you can see all the developments that's going on. You only have one shot at this. Downtown, I have been a downtown proponent since I moved into town in 2003. We really need to make that downtown look good, and I've heard some really good ideas today about things we could probably do with downtown. You need to make a decision on Fort Day and on the swimming pool. Both of those are consuming a lot of money that you don't have, that could be used elsewhere, if we made some decisions and got those things decided. Don't spend the park tax money that was voted for by the citizens. Avoid the temptation to get that into more operational type stuff. And I've heard some comments two weeks ago, it sounded like to me, the city's gonna try to co-opt some of that park tax money. And I really think we need to make sure that the citizens have the opportunity to make some, to come up with some ideas and to follow up on that. Make this a participation thing. That's how it was sold to the citizens when we went to the citizens for that park tax.
I don't think co-allows, just FYI, I don't think allows for any operational expenses.
Well...
Its permanent structure's not.
That's true, but don't, my point is, don't allow the city projects to take it all up. Make sure that you get some of these smaller groups involved with that. And I know Brian and I sat through a lot of meetings with that committee as we were going over this. I would hate to see park tax money not go to help, you know, not have citizen involvement. Heard a lot about Team Payson. Like, I think that's a great approach. We really need to sell Payson. That comes back to why I think so, I feel so passionately about the north interchange. Supposing and assuming that UDOT comes back and will work with us on that. This is something I can say, since I'm not on the council, but frankly, staff, I know about two or three years ago, there was a proposal that came to staff, from staff, that we increase salaries for the mayor and the city council. For various reasons, that was voted against. I would really put, you should really put that in this budget and act on it. It's not popular with a lot of citizens, but when you compare what, how you're compensated with all of our cities that are our size or bigger, in this valley and none of the valleys, we're way falling short. I think that's important. And finally, the economic development committee, I think we really need to be supporting economic development effort. Sitting up at the golf course last fall, when we had that event, and just listening to the people that came through and talked to us, there were a lot of people that didn't know anything about Payson, who learned a lot. And I think that we talked about payson, about selling the city. It's really important, because we compete with every other city up and down the front range. And right now, our image is really worth a second class location. All you have to do is look at things like median income in Payson, and we're the lowest in the county. We've got to restart attracting, advancing people to this great city, because this is a great city. I love it here. I'm often told, people, this is where I want to be buried. I didn't grow up here, but I want to be buried here. I want this to be a great city. In 20 years from now, I'd like to be able to look and see that we've really got a city that reflects what it really is. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, just one thing, I think that we have allocated $200,000 for renovating, so...
I think you should spend more, if you want my opinion. If you're gonna make this the location, make it first class. If you've got the extra money, let's do it. Let's not wait, hard piecemeal it. You know, let's renovate here, let's renovate out there, let's renovate the offices. Let's make it functional, and at the same time, make it where, if somebody comes in here that's not from Payson, and they look, and they're concerned about how we look, but they see something that's pleasing, that's functional, but also shows how professional we are.
I believe we've talked about all of those too, so that's great. Appreciate it, Mike.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up and let us know who you are.
Hi, my name is Doug Finch. I grew up in this town, and I lived in this town for some time too. And currently don't live here, but I'm a property owner in the annexation holding zone next to Teresa's property there, is where we have family property. And so, I wanted to just take an opportunity to spend a little time with the council tonight, and I wanted upfront commend you for the work that you're doing. Public service is something that I've tried to learn a little bit about, emulate some of the great mayors and people who've set the examples in this town from the time I grew up. And while I currently don't live here, I have plans to return. So, some of the former gentlemen, this is a wonderful town, and I've looked forward to the opportunity to return here with my family sometime in the near future. So, I'll just make the comment about, and again, want to present it to you as a compliment for the work that's moving forward with your city planners regarding your master planning. And I know there's a lot going on in different parts of the city, but I know with that annexation holding zone that's just particularly to the west here, that heads out to the landfill, that does affect our property. And I understand, working with Jill and the others in your team and your staff, that they are looking very carefully and very responsibly about how to manage its future. So, I want to, again, thank you for addressing that, where for some period of time, and Teresa knows this for a number of years, it's just kind of sat there a little bit of a standstill. And so, now it's looking like it's being addressed, it's being addressed with some vision and some thoughtfulness. I know it puts some real burden on you to think about the water and the sewage and the things that would be out in that area. And I know occasionally you have those in that part of the neighborhood who are wanting to push projects to maybe even circumvent the master planning that you're looking into right now. I mean, just being an advocate for keeping that a very long game, you know, process there. Let's not maybe jump in too soon before that master plan is done, because I think what you'll have in there is all the expertise to look at what your infrastructure is. And because, again, I grew up there, my father grew up there, and my grandfather grew up there. That's more than just soil to me, that's holy land. And I look forward to the opportunity to return here with my family soon. But I wouldn't want to have that be upended at this critical juncture, when you're making decisions about how that's gonna be fluidly developed with your planning, your goals for Payson City, to make sure that the residents and all the residents have opportunity to give some public thought into and participation in that master plan. Because in water, sewage, those sorts of things are huge issues out there, I know. But the people that have lived there, the people whose parents and grandparents have lived there, I know that you respect and you value their opinions about what happens out there. And I look forward to tonight and any other occasion where you might be discussing a study session, or in other ways to participate in that conversation. So, again, my main message to you is, thank you for looking ahead. Thanks for having a vision for this wonderful city. I've, like I said, I've lived out of city now for about 15 years, but when people ask me, in my employment situations or wherever I travel, I always tell people, I'm from Payson. And it's a wonderful place, I look forward to having my family return to, and thank you for making it a great place to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Zach Rubble, and me and Sarah are cousins. We found that out tonight.
Are you really?
Yeah, cousins.
Good. So, we're real close.
Yeah, so close. I'd sort of like to thank the city council and the staff that we have, and the new mayor that we have. I feel like we've made a lot of great progress since the new year, and I appreciate the effort that everyone's been putting in. And I am grateful that we have a good, great city staff that wants to help improve the image, and they're very supportive of the council and the mayor that we have. And we were grateful that we had this survey that we could do, that other people could do, to help improve our image. And I'm grateful that UVU wanted to partner with us, to help us improve our image and find ways that we could be more helpful to Payson. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Zach. Does anyone else would like to come up and take advantage of the public? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to staff reports and council report staff. Is there any reports that you'd like to get to us?
Travis told me to run to beat everybody up here. I am just here as employee wellness. We put up this on for eight years, the Pay 4 or 5K 1-mile challenge. And I'm just coming here to personally invite all of you to come and everybody out here. It's really fun. Linda came last year, and she helped out, and she was awesome. I really appreciated her being there. She was the person over the fruit and the water who helped hold.
I didn't, I didn't run.
No, you didn't run, but you helped. And that was great. I applaud you there. But it does cost a dollar. Everybody gets a finisher medal and a certificate. We get sponsorship from the community businesses, so we can give prizes out. And then, along with it, is the elementary school challenge fundraiser, so the elementary school that gets the most participants there. That means their students, their staff, their family members, anybody. This is open up to, we have people from odd income, everywhere comes to this event. So, and then that elementary school gets an assembly, and we give them playground balls. And last year, we had two schools win, so it was Spring Lake and Parkview. So, we split that, those playground balls between the two schools, gave them an assembly. As far as I know, it's Spring Lake Elementary, the principal, I've never seen a principal so excited to do it again. So anyways, I'm just gonna hand these up to, sorry, I'll probably call you Brett, because I know you're from high school, but, and then you guys can pass it around, there's a registration form, so please tell your family and friends, please come out, it'll be fun, it's April 28th, so...
Thank you, Sarah.
Mayor, council, and public, just wanted to give a report from our Recreation World. Tomorrow night, we start our adult coed volleyball, new league starting, and we're excited that'll be going this, starting this week. For those interested, we are accepting registrations for youth baseball and softball, as well as track and field right now, and soon, we'll be accepting swim lesson registrations as well. As far as events go, we are putting together a Viva El Madiachi celebration, a Latin culture celebration on May 4th, the Friday before the Cinco de Mayo, and that'll be at the Petini Empath, you know, that'll be free to the public. And we'll have sponsors sponsoring the artists that will be singing and dancing at that festival. We have prepared, speaking of the Memorial Park upgrades, the idea of pickleball courts and basketball courts in that area. We've got two companies that have given us an opinion of an estimate, and I failed to get it on the agenda tonight, so I will email you that report. The estimates are between 400 and 450,000 for that, and that could be potentially shared with the park tax and the general fund budget over a couple of years. But that's one idea, and I'll put that out to you soon. As far as an upgrade on the park tax, we're grateful Nancy Allen's here tonight, as well as Tara Makin, who are members we've met as the committee to prepare for the grant applications for the, for the organizations that can apply. And for the public, let me just point out, we put that application online, it's on our front page of the city webpage, as well as on our recreation page. The park program, or Parks, Arts, Recreation and Culture Program, is to support recreational facilities and cultural organizations that enrich the overall quality of life of the citizens of Payson. The park program is committed to enhancing city recreational and cultural facilities and providing fair and equitable access to this park funding through competitive grant opportunities. And eligible organizations could be awarded a grant and apply for a grant, those that are 501(c)(3) status, and those that maintain a presence within Payson City, and that are cultural or historical council as well, within our city. So, those applications are due on April 10th. So, if you know of organizations, then feel free to reach out to them as well and help spread the word. We've contacted personally all the organizations that have been involved, like the Payson Community Theater, the Civic Corral, the PPP, the Historical Association, as well as the Payson City Band that's been here. So, that's where we're at on that. Thank you.
When's the application due for the park?
April 10. That's the second Tuesday of April each year. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, council, public, just a quick note, that spring cleanup will begin March 31st through April 7th, in conjunction with spring break. And then, we'll get back on, we've indicated there'd be a fall cleanup, that hasn't been scheduled yet, but we'll get some feedback from the council late summer to schedule that fall cleanup, which will be a new addendum to our schedule.
Is that the free dump week?
Yes, sir.
That conjunction of that?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
I guess on that, that'll go out in the newsletter and everything like that?
Yes, sir, it'll go on the website and newsletter and everything.
Mayor, council, just a quick update, we receive, well, Kirk Beach is here with Central Utah, but we received some 30 percent plans on the Central Utah line that will be coming through Payson. This next phase will get us up to the east side of Pea Mountain, so then, you know, but that's about three to four years out, and then the next phase will actually take it right through our city. So, that's getting a lot closer, we'll have a different, you know, option with water, and then we'll start having that option to pay for, but just wanted to give you a kind of a heads up. I know a few of us were in that meeting, but just so you guys have a heads up on that that was coming, so that'll be something we'll have to plan for with all these plans that we're already doing.
Travis, do you have an update on the water situation in the mountains?
Unfortunately, with as many meetings as we've had Monday and Tuesday, no, I did not have time to look. But I think, last time I checked, we have about 34, 35 inches daylight of light, as I did. I did yesterday. Our snowpack is 63 percent of normal. Our water content year-to-date is 57. So, we made it on the snowpack over 60, but we're still in the 50s. So, we still have a ways to go. I know one of the KSL reports indicated that before the storm hit, that we were projected to get about two feet up in the mountains, but to get us back to normal, they projected we needed about eight feet. So, we're still behind the curve ball, but all this moisture's helped. We hope to get some more. Looks like it's starting to dry out, so we're about the 60 percent range.
Good evening, mayor and council. First, Sarah just asked me to mention, today we did training on an online application process, so public, you know, it's a great program where we can get all the applications online, and that should be up and running by the end of the week. So, all positions will be posted, and everyone can apply online, so that's exciting. One thing to discuss on the parks, we received a letter from a gentleman that was requesting to bring his dog to the Scottish Festival. Our current ordinances don't allow a dog in Memorial Park during celebrations. Having said that, we have 32 parks, we allow dogs in 31 of them. I'm a dog owner, I love dogs, so, but I guess why I'm bringing this to you is because I'm gonna write him a letter back, just saying that we can't, you know, he gave me a pedigree of his dog, it sounds like a great dog, that's well-trained, and, but I don't, we don't really want to get in the business of deciding what dog should come in and what shouldn't. So, unless we're gonna entertain changing the ordinance, staff believes we're just going to not allow dogs in Memorial Park. Speaking with not just Mark, but also Brad and different things, is obviously with that many people, if you take an onion day celebration or a Scottish day celebration, and there's any problem with a dog, then we feel that way. So, I just want your support on that, because sometimes when we send lenders out, denying, the next step, they're gonna come to you guys.
I'd just like to say, as someone that attends all the celebrations, I'm there at every band concert, that rule has never been enforced. I know it's printed, but I've never seen anyone down there enforcing that. There are dogs in there all the time.
And I'm so glad Brad's not here tonight, so I'm glad he, you know? No, no, it is an enforcement, it is an enforcement thing. Now, having said that, a service dog is allowed, so they, and so there, and you've kind of seen the airlines go through this with pets, and, you know, it's an emotional attachment thing, but, yeah, on the parks end, we believe that that goes to law enforcement, because we can't give them a ticket or, you know, we can clean up the mess, but we can't issue the tickets. But I agree, there's no sense having rules and then not enforcing them in all aspects.
Just one thing, as far as the Scottish Festival goes, culturally, at Scottish festivals across the country, they bring their dogs, and you're asking people to travel with their family members. I think you may be, well, look at an exception for the Scottish Festival. It's part of the cultural heritage for the people involved in Scottish festivals.
If, yeah, if you guys, and we'll do whatever you guys want. If you guys want to change the ordinance for the Scottish Festival, then by all means, just let us know. I just, I just don't like, if you start making exceptions for that dog, but if you guys feel like the Scottish Festival is one that we want dogs in there, then we'll allow it. But...
Conversation earlier.
Maybe so, maybe we need to look at the ordinance.
It is a, it's a hard one to enforce, unless you have a presence there all the time with police officers. I know, as a police officer, I have done that from time to time, but it's not anything consistent.
But does it have to be a police officer?
In order to, to, well, you can have...
Give me the authority during a, give me the authority during a band concert.
Well, Linda, anyone can say, like, you gotta get your dog out of here, but if they say no, that's where the police officer, you need a citation, like, we're gonna write you a citation.
But they haven't dealt with me.
That's fair, that's fair.
We want them to come back, Linda. We want them to come back.
They'll be welcome back, but, okay.
Let's swear in.
And I'll get out of here, but on the last note, going to our previous session, our work session, I did have a call today, I thought at first it was a wedding, I was telling Mike, but I got a call for a 200-person baby shower with an open bar at the golf course. So, there's still this need, I'm not saying we want to get into baby showers and that, but, so we continue to get calls on that, and we do have...
It's a big baby shower.
That's a big baby shower. That's a lot, but so, and it is in our CIP budget, so it is still on the radar, so we are looking into that.
There is a need for that.
Okay, if there's no other staff, we'll move on to council reports. Kristensen?
Well, I appreciate faculty, there's a, I do it again. I teach school, it's faculty and staff, folks, that's the way it's gonna be, I guess. I'm gonna try to break the habit. Staff's willing us to listen to our ideas and to look at the possibilities of those. I mean, that's why our constituents have voted us here, is to make the changes that they want, and as we've heard, that's great, that they give us that opportunity. I'm grateful to see all the young people out here, you know? I know that that's, they're probably like, oh, this is the most boring thing I've ever experienced in my whole life.
Looks like a Mr. Morell assignment.
It does, it's Mr. Morell's assignments too. It's coming right up. But anyway, I appreciate seeing the young scouts, the high school students here. It's good for them to be part of this, so that they know the processes.
I just have one thing, because you're gonna hear from me a little bit later, but I'd just like to thank Dave and the mayor for the hard work with SESD, getting the resolution and getting at, at least got tables, so they put a lot, a lot of hours into that, and so thank you very much.
Thanks.
I've been gone for the last month, so I haven't, I really don't have anything to say, but I want to echo what Brian said. We appreciate the mayor and Dave for the hard work that they've done. I know it was touch and go when we worried about it, but thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and chime in on here as the mayor. Some time ago, I went to a open house that UBU held in Salt Lake in connection with Oxford University. I don't know if any of you have heard of the Quill Project, but it's a project that UBU and Oxford have entered into to help make the Constitution of the United States the one that we hold dear, I'm sure all of us, to be understood a little bit better, put it in a format that will be an easy format for anyone to take part in and learn about. So it's a, it's kind of a unique alliance between Oxford and UBU, you know, coming from England, but there is a pressure there that is very much interested in the Constitution and how it was put together, and so together with UBU and he and the Oxford University, they're going to put together a curriculum that will help our Constitution to be understood and how it actually came together.
Yeah, I'd like to thank again the mayor and Dave and the staff involved in this bill involving Strawberry Electric and its relationship with its contract that it's entered into. It's a lot of time, a lot of work, and I think it's to the benefit of the city that we tackle that issue. Also, I'd like to thank the street group for taking care of the snow. I know we get a lot of snow, and it's a lot of hours, and nobody's ever happy with where they put the snow, and, but I'm glad that it's off the streets and we've got a safe place to drive, and it's a hard job, so I appreciate them. And this one's kind of a touchy one, I don't know if I should bring it up or not. We live in a, in a city with mixed allegiances, but a good portion of Salem Hills High School are also Payson High School students, and so we like to congratulate them on their state boys' and girls' basketball championship teams, and we know we've got some Payson residents that have kids on the team that live in Payson, and so we've got two great schools that support our city and that we take students from, and so we congratulate all of them.
I second that one.
I'd just like to thank all the staff that has put up with me, asking hundreds of questions. You're teaching me stuff I need to know, and I'll still be coming to the ones that I've missed, and I appreciate you guys letting me come and listen to everything that goes on in your meetings, giving my little two cents whether it matters or not, but I do appreciate you letting me speak, and I appreciate the fact that you tell me what's going on, because I need to know that. And again, mayor, you've put so much time in, I really appreciate that. I can't tell you guys, he's basically living here, I think he goes home and showers and comes back. So thank you, everybody.
Okay, we'll move on to number four, Communities of Care, mayors. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. The scout certificates, councilwoman and cars will present them, sorry.
I can talk loud enough, so I'm not going to go down to the microphone, but we appreciate all these scouts. How many of you are here because you want to be? They are honest.
Part of the scout law, isn't it?
Did anybody raise their hand? Oh, dear. Okay, well, I'm going to start. We appreciate that you're here, we know you're earning a badge, but we're super excited that you're here. I'm going to read your name, I want you to come up and get the certificate, then I want you to walk along and shake all of the council member and the mayor's hand, then I want you to stand right here on the lower one, because there's something I want to do after, okay? The first one I've got is Jackson Bulkley. He's not here. I might have a couple that aren't. Nathan Macon, I know Nathan's here. I'm going to move down here, Nathan, there we go. Okay, thank you for coming, all right. And Calder Hunter. I'm Calder Hunter, thanks for coming, even though you didn't want him. Okay, Jefferson Zabriskie. Hi, Jefferson, thank you. Enik Dykstra. Did I say it right? Okay, thank you, there you go. Kayton Chinon. Kayton Chinon, did I say the last name right? Okay, I might have goofed up your first name a little, I apologize. Max Shirts. Thanks, my guys, there you go. Garrett Holt. Okay, no, him. And Benjamin Bagley.
I should be saying Bagley.
Oh, is that how you, how do you, oh, Bagley.
B-A-G-L-E.
Oh, just like that.
But it said B-A-G-L-E.
I know, that's not on my set of the way I did. Are there others that we didn't get? Okay, come over here.
Come and give me your name.
And we'll make a certificate out.
Write your name right there, and we'll get you the certificate. Any others?
Yeah.
Any other scouts?
Okay, now, one thing that we, oh, come shake my hand and we'll get you the certificate. One thing that we like to do, we know, we already know that these boys are super excited to be here, but we want to know why they like scouting, okay? I'm going to start with you.
I like scouting, because camping's fun. It's fun, I like, um, I like fishing.
Great.
Um, I like doing sledding, too.
Okay, sounds good.
Extreme sledding. All right. Um, who else?
I think that's good, you did it. Okay, how about you?
I consider myself a technical whiz, so I don't know as much as that.
Good. Okay, Mr. Holt?
It's fun.
It's fun, great.
Just going right out.
That's good, thank you.
I like to try things I haven't done before.
That's good.
It's fun to work together, and it's fun to be all friends.
Great, okay.
They have fun activities.
Good.
We do activities that you guys set up, like ponds and stuff.
Good.
Because of the spirit of scouting and, she has nothing else but...
I like my leader and my troop in the activities.
Good. I think you guys, these are our future leaders, so we appreciate them. Thank you, you guys.
It's time for you. Come on up, Kim, thank you. This will be Communities of Care, mayor's award.
Right, we only actually have one tonight, we normally have three, but one of our kids is sick, and another one, their mom is out of the country, so she wants to be here for this important thing. So can we get Spencer Bennett to come up? Spencer is from Payson Junior High, and we really appreciate Payson Junior High's support in our mayor recognition award. They put it out on their Facebook page, they, I send them a picture each month, they post it in the web of school, so we appreciate that. So this is what Payson Junior High said about Bennett, or Spencer. Spencer Bennett is in the ninth grade, he is an excellent person and student. Spencer is hardworking and a role model for others. He participates in class, is mature and responsible, and is inclusive of other people. Spencer is so positive and such a good influence on other athletes. He knows how to set goals, work hard, and then reach those goals. That is from Mrs. Bragg. Awesome student, deep questions and comments in geography, offers different perspectives few students realize, and he's kind and inclusive, and that was from Miss Clayton. Spencer, oh, it's funny, is an impressive young man. I taught him in ECF's last semester. He is very accomplished and is a student with many skills that will help him during his lifetime. He completes assignments regularly and on time. He works well with others, especially girls, and he treats other students with patience. He is kind, respectful, and well-mannered in class. I enjoyed teaching him. That's from Mr. Howell. Spencer is very sweet and helpful to those around him. He makes a point to include everyone, and he is quick to make friends with friends who need a friend. On top of these characteristics, Spencer is a high achiever academically, not shying away from a challenge, and persevering until not only he, that he not only understands the concept, but he can explain it to others. That is from Mrs. Fells. Spencer is an amazing student who loves learning and is a true Renaissance man. Mr. Sotter, so thank you. Stand there and you want to take a picture, and Mom, you are welcome to walk on up and take a picture.
Walk and raise your hands.
Yeah, we usually have the whole council come up. Do you want to stand in the middle and...
Do want to take just a quick minute and tell you some of the upcoming things for March. I know most of you are probably not thinking Easter. The chamber has been thinking Easter for several weeks now, so Easter comes on the first this year, so the 31st will be our city Easter weekend, and we are actively filling eggs and preparing for that, so please put that on your calendars, it's been a fun event, and we're crossing our fingers we're not hiding them in snow this year, but it was still fun. We found them for weeks later, too. It is my pleasure tonight to present our March Business of the Month to Coffee Central and Scrapbooking, and that would be Teresa Hyatt on our council. For any of you that know Teresa and you know her business, if you've ever gone in there, there's always a smile, there's always a happy welcoming person behind the counter saying, how can I help you? And you can spend hours looking through stickers, I promise, I've done it. But it's exciting, they're a great contributor to many things that go on in the community behind the scenes, they're advocates to the chamber and the many things that we do to grow our business community in so many ways, so very privileged and well-received for you, so thank you.
Sorry, just to get sit down. Only behind Teresa.
Okay, I like that, too. She is squatting.
She is squatting.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the chamber, and I'd like you guys all to know, we are really working hard as a chamber. We've gotten with Santaquin, and the chamber is growing. We need to get out and talk more to our businesses who aren't in the chamber and get them involved again. This chamber is really awesome, I have to admit. They go into their meetings, and they're great people to work with. They are really taking and going with the, with the flow and trying to get it really a top chamber, so I really appreciate this, thank you.
Go with the number six report from the Economic Development Board, Councilman Hewlett.
Okay, I have to apologize, because I do not have a PowerPoint. That's why I'm putting the plug in for getting somebody to assist Dave, so I can send him the stuff, so they can make a PowerPoint so everybody can see it. I do have some handouts, so there'll be something you can kind of share or pass around and share if you'd like, but there's not enough for everybody here, so Teresa, when you get to the end, can you just take it out there? So tonight, what I want to talk about basically is we have a, well, first of all, well, let me tell you, we have a bunch of goals that we want to do for economic development, and so I'm going to pass those out in a minute, but, so we just want to discuss these goals with the, with the council and with staff, make sure we're kind of on the same page, trying to accomplish the same thing, so just like with our budget, we just want to make sure we're doing the same thing, but we do have some people here from that are on our Economic Development Committee. Chris Phelps is here from State of Cinemas, Dave Tuckett's on it as a manager, the mayor's on it, Mike Hardy is on our, is on the county committee, and Shelley from the chamber's on the committee, and then Teresa comes all the time, too, so we do have some here from the committee. But first of all, I just wanted to go through what our mission statement is. The Economic Development Committee of Payson proactively promotes economic development and improvements of all business conditions in Payson in order to maximize employment opportunities, the tax base, and the quality of life in Payson. The primary focus of the committee is to recruit industrial and retail businesses and help existing businesses to grow and thrive. Its secondary focus is to promote tourism, educational opportunities, residential development, and downtown development. The committee serves as a conduit between the commercial interests of Payson and the municipal government, so that's just what our mission statement is. So we're going through these goals, think about that as part of our mission statement. So I'm going to pass these goals out real quick, and again, Teresa, if you want, what we have left over. And as we go through these, the council staff, if you can kind of give me a direction of some of them that you think are more important than others, because there are quite a few here that we like to work on, it's just like anything, you have a big list, but then some of them you're going to concentrate on more than others. As we're passing these out, I'll read through them real fast. We have a golf event that we started last year that we invite businesses and railtors and different government entities to come to Payson and show them Payson, and it turned out really well last year, so we're going to do that again this year, and we're planning on doing it, you know, going forward if everybody wants to keep doing that. But we're planning on doing it on September 26th this year, and last year we had it right after school started, and people weren't quite settled in yet, and we had some that couldn't come, and, but this will be a perfect time up at our golf course, because it'll be when the, when the leaves are just out there in full, full color. So we're planning on doing that and inviting a lot of people. a lot and line up places to go business to see while we're down there in Las Vegas. And then the master plan, general plan, utility plan, which the city is working on, we just put it on there because we think it's important, but the city's going to be taking care of that, so. Now we just need the vision and statement and strategic plan, and that's, again, the city will be working on that. Then we want to have an economic strategic plan, so part of the bigger picture, we need an economic strategic plan, and we have some goals on how to do that. Another thing we thought, the viability of downtown is very important, and also the Huish Theater getting that open, because if the Huish Theater's open, we have something down there every night, you have 200 people down there every night doing something, they're going to want to stay and eat or something like that, or shop, or, so we think that's a, have an anchor down there in downtown is very important. Then we have Forbay, which we're, the city spends about $430,000 a year for the bond on that. There's a couple things on that. One is to preserve it, which we, a lot of people think that's very important, but then also to pay, we need to figure out a way to pay the debt, so there's kind of conflict to preserve and pay debt, so we really need to understand that and try to, because that hampers us, paying that amount of money hampers us in fixing roads and things like that, so there's a, we just need to figure out how we can pay the debt and preserve at the same time. Then we have, we've been doing this for like three or four years, business and retention and growth, and we have different businesses in town that are signed up to different members of the committee, because there are two different kinds of businesses in town. We have the businesses that employ people, that are big employees out, especially out in the Business Park, and then we have the businesses that bring in sales tax, which helps pay for everything. So we concentrate on the highest businesses for sales tax, and then the highest ones employ the most people in Payson. So we want to know them, know their needs and wants, and so we always be in contact with them and develop a relationship with them, so they don't move out of town, or if there's a problem, we can address that quickly, and they can come back to the city. One thing we want to do, too, is look, research on the car dealership. Car dealerships bring a lot of sales tax into the city. And then UVU, meet quarterly with UVU, to try to establish a curricula, try to get them to build here sooner than later. Our goal is to see if we can get them building here in four years. I think their contract, they have, talks about 15 years, so we'd like to do that sooner or later. Just so you know, they have not purchased the property in Payson yet, they have money in escrow, and they're just waiting for UDOT to say exactly where that interchange is going to be, so that's where we are with UVU, and they're looking at buying about 30 acres and having a full campus here. Employment, we have a committee that starts, we started a subcommittee on employment because out in the Business Park, we had a lot of employers that says that we can't expand here because we don't have employees, and so we started that and have been very happy with. We've got people from MATC, UVU, UTA, what were some of the other ones? Chris?
ALC.
Yeah, the Nible School District, and the businesses out in the Business Parks. They've been working as a group, how do we get people here in Payson to come work in our manufacturing businesses out in the Business Park? So it's been a very good committee. Then we're working on branding, trying to make a brand for Payson, who we are, what we are, and we sent out a survey, we exactly, two minutes ago, but we've had 600 responses to it, and so we got to go through that survey and see what they're, what they think about Payson. Then we have, we're working on a website, we've been working on it for a while, we want that to get up and be live. And then we talked about business cards, it's a very minor thing, but for the people on Economic Development Committee, is to go out and talk to people, and give them a business card. I mean, anybody in this audience can recruit a business to Payson, and, because all you have to do is tell them about Payson, and say, "Hey, we have a great place, great place to live and work," and so it's up to everybody, but we figured as a group, if we had business cards, we can be out passing those around. And then, and I'm sure all of you, this would probably be the most important one, but we put restaurants on here. We just wanted to kind of see what the five restaurants are that most people would like to bring to Payson, and we'll do a survey for that. And then contact those restaurants. And again, we'll try to understand, restaurants are hard to get, the chain restaurants, because they have certain criteria, but we could learn what those criteria are and see how close we are to meeting those and see what we can do to meet those criteria. And then have a budget for economic development. And then we talked about grants earlier today, but just look at grants, so there's a couple of government websites. We even talked about getting an intern to look at the state grants, there's more probably, state grants are easier to get than probably federal grants, but even the state, even in their own departments, don't even know what grants they have, so we talked about interns, getting a list of all the grants in Utah, because there's quite a few, and they're probably easier to get, and some of them aren't even being used. And we talked about incubator, having incubator startup businesses here in Payson, and then meeting with Woodbury. Woodbury owns the gravel pit where the, by the Stadium of Stadium Cinemas, and meet with them quarterly to try to encourage them to build there sooner than later and do what we can there. So those are the goals, so I'm going to ask you if you have any, which ones you think are most important, and if you had any others you think we ought to be working on, and then I'm going to go through a few things on how we can maybe measure some of these things.
Just one comment, like the other materials we get, it would be nice to receive this before now. I know. Number one for me is keep meeting with Woodbury. I mean, they've already got the property, they've got the land, they've got the prime retail location, so that would be my number one.
Friends is right there, but we've discussed that. Friends are very important, we need them. We need them to move ahead with a lot of the things that we want to do.
I think Woodbury would be my number one, also. We've met with them before, they've talked about things that were going to happen, and then it's kind of followed them through. So I think we need to stay on them and let them know that we, we're not going to sit idly by. We want them to make a decision and follow through with that. I also think restaurant is important. I don't know how many times you get asked every week, "Are we going to get a restaurant in Payson, are we going to..." I think people want that, and I understand they look at, you know, how many people live here, and if they'll be busy during lunch, busy at night, but I think that's something that we could look at. I also think it's important that we look at a way that we can, that debt that we have with Forbay, something that we can do to help pay off that debt. Then we could maybe address streets, roads, sidewalk, curb, all of that, so beautify Payson.
I think that if we're pushing with that Woodbury to make sure that we're ready to ante up, I know that I've been talking with the rec department and things on that, on the baseball diamonds, so if we're going to push them, we need to be able to back that and make sure that those new baseball diamonds are constructed, and that they don't push us right out of our own rec department, so, but, so we got to be ready for that, it needs to be there.
So I think the golf event, I mean, that's, we're just going to do that, okay?
You see, a lot of these are just going to happen.
Yeah, that's just going to happen, and the master plan, the strategic plan, those things are in the works now, we're pushing that through, but this is a good list. Forbay is important, we've talked about, you know, maybe meeting with the county commissioners to see if we can get some help from them.
So the state just approved Tesla to be able to sell here, I'm sure we need Tesla to come down here.
Yeah, that's good.
No, that would be nice, they're not going to come down here for economic reasons. I think one of the things that we're missing on here is finding ways to increase the profile, and I guess some of this is long-term, like UVU will bring it in, but we're, I mean, we're away from Salt Lake City, so I guess we're going the wrong direction. We're not that far away from BYU and UVU and a lot of the tech centers, but I think we need to work harder to try to improve ourselves, to increase more high-end jobs. You know, and hotels and all of that are all nice, but in restaurants and things like that, those come when you have people that have good-paying jobs, and so I think we need to have more focus on bringing in higher-paying jobs, and advertising how close we are to a highly educated community, both here in Payson and just within 15 to 20 minutes of some big campuses, and 40,000, 50,000 students.
That's one of the things on the economic part, we've talked at the ALC and different businesses here, to help the students in high school and junior high to be able to know what kind of jobs there are out there, and that the manufacturing jobs that are available are not what the manufacturing jobs that their parents were associated with. It is high-tech, and there are some good-paying jobs, and there are some programs they can get into in high school especially, that will help them prepare to take some of those jobs, so it's something that's ongoing as well, in conjunction with the businesses here that are involved in that. Also, might mention that with UVU, we recently met with their representatives, and them at the high school, the vice president and the high school group, they wanted to link with UVU, and I believe in the future you'll see some flags that have the UVU logo on them, as well as the Payson City logo, and also the high school logo. So we're actively working to make that come to fruition and that link up.
The Payson logo flags, we probably need to get our branding done before...
So I have just one word.
Yeah.
And I've heard this from people outside of Payson, is activities, it brings in new money, like he was talking about the rodeo grounds, you know, if we could come up with different activities that we could bring to Payson besides Onion Days and Salmon Days, because people are always looking for things that they can go to on the weekends. That's bringing people to Payson, so, I mean, we have some great things right now, if we could expand on that, if we, you know, can get that motorcycle track out there, get the, you know, driveway up to Forbay so that we can bring more people, even if we can get that Forbay thing working, I would think that we could have bike races up there, and it's some pretty good money, you know, it's ways to bring people here, and it's not just the money, you know, the $75 they pay to compete. They're here, they're staying here, they're eating here, they're coming to Payson where they probably wouldn't stop here if that wasn't there. So I think we need to work on, I mean, that's part of the economic development, is bringing more people from outside to Payson, because it brings in new money on a constant basis.
Okay, just a couple more things, I'm trying to keep this short. I just passed out, and I'll see Dave get this on the website, but Teresa, you want to keep passing those down?
Sorry.
What I did is, it did, we need to measure economic growth, because if we do all these things and nothing happens, or, so I came up with some ways to measure it, and we look at how these start, we look at sales tax, we look at impact fees, consumer construction, commercial construction. So the charts I just handed out, and I'll get this on the website, but it just goes through new dwellings, and you can see back in 2000, we built quite a few houses in Payson, and then it's dropped off, and then Salem's come up, and the others have come up, and we, because of our infrastructure problems, things like that, but we're starting, I think we're going to get back on track for that, but it's a way to measure. And also, I looked at construction value, I have one for new, for residential and consumer, and then one just for, not consumer, but commercial, and then one just for commercial. And you can see, we've done fairly well in commercial, where a lot of the other places you just build houses, and really, it's costed more, you make more money off of commercial than you do housing. It costs a lot to have a subdivision, because of the road and taking care of it and everything like that, so we've done fairly well that way, but it's just a way for it to track. And I just got one more, and I'll pass this out later, but it's just, it goes back to what Sarah said about sales tax. Our sales tax are up fairly good, but there's a study that comes out that shows our sales tax, the growth of our sales tax to the growth of the sales tax in other communities, and we're almost at the bottom, and so that's another measurement for us, is that we need to be, if you just look at the sales tax, you think, "Wow, we're doing great," but if you look at, everybody else is growing faster than we are, so that's another measurement for us, and make sure we're on track to do what we want to do, so, that's all I have, unless you have some questions.
Oh, one thing on the ICSC, I've said this before in conversations with other people, I think if we go to that again, we can take one or two elected officials, but I think you have to have a city staff member, like we can't keep sitting just elected officials that aren't here full-time. Like you need somebody full-time, like Jill, or Dave, or Travis, or somebody who knows, like the days of sending elected officials, like this is a part-time job for us, and we don't know all the ins and outs. That being said, I would like to go, I campaigned for it the two years ago, but...
Yeah, and Dave's planning on going this year, so. Anything else? Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to action items, A on the agenda. Public hearing slash ordinance amendment to the Payson City zoning map affecting the Utah County parcel, I won't read the parcel number, located near the intersection of 1300 East and Salem Canal Road, and also public hearing on preliminary plan approval of the Ashley Ridge subdivision located near the intersection of 1300 East and Salem Canal Road as well. So we'll turn some time over to Jill.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for opening both the public hearings, or you will be opening them together, so I appreciate that, because it's really hard to stay on task with just one item when we, you know, filter over to the subdivision, so I do appreciate that. But thank you for the introduction. I do have a presentation, I know some of the residents are here, they've seen this presentation before, I know some of the councilmember have, but for those new councilmembers, the mayor, any of the public that's interested in this development, I'm going to go through a presentation, but I'll try to be quick. So we are looking at, the area that we're looking at is, there on the southern end of that property is Salem Canal Road. The access, the main access to the site will come off of 1300 East. 1300 East actually is the division between what is our municipal boundaries and the unincorporated area of Utah County. And so this is the easternmost parcel that is in Payson City at this point in time. And so this is the property that is proposed for development. There are some existing site conditions, there is an existing home on the structure that's shown in the bottom left-hand picture there, and then the remaining portion of the property has been used for farm ground for many, many years. So there, as with any development, there's a lot of features that are unique to the site. In this particular location, you have irrigation facilities, so you have not only private utilities, but you also have a lateral of the Salem Canal Irrigation Company. The advocate will need to complete roadway improvements, connection of the existing home, the existing home is connected to some utilities but not others, and so the subdivision will trigger that the home be connected to all city services. They will need to satisfy setback requirements, there's still a few setback requirements for some of the outbuildings that need to be resolved, and that will be done with the revisions to the plans. There's private facilities throughout the site, as you can see there in the picture, there's a gas line that runs along Salem Canal. So there, as with any development, there's a lot of features that are unique to the site in this particular location. You have irrigation facilities, so you have not only private utilities, but you also have a lateral of the Salem Canal Irrigation Company. The applicant will need to complete roadway improvements, connection of the existing home. The existing home is connected to some utilities but not others. And so the subdivision will trigger that the home be connected to all city services. They will need to satisfy setback requirements. There's still a few setback requirements for some of the outbuildings that need to be resolved. And that will be done with the revisions to the plans. There's private facilities throughout the site, as you can see there in the picture. There's a gas line that runs along Salem Canal Road as well that will need to be accommodated out the time that those improvements are completed. And then with any division, there are not any animal rights in the property now, but with any agricultural land and with the subdivision property, animal rights are relinquished at that time. So it is a condition that we include in these subdivisions. Moving on, this is the layout of the development. So as you can see, Salem Canal Road is on the southern end of the development. You have 1300 East on the west. And then you have roads that connect, you know, through the development to provide access to all 26 lots within the development. So you have just a general layout there on the left and then the right-hand side, there's a lot of busy work, you know, to identify how city utilities will be installed to provide service to those future lots. Here's a copy of the final plat. It's a little cleaner, just showing, you know, the numbering and also the size of those lots. I do have a range of the lots here in just a moment. So the land use applications. So the applicant, in order to develop the property as proposed, had to submit two land use applications. First one being the zone change. The property is currently zoned R1A, so it's residential agricultural zone. And the applicant is requesting an R19 zoning designation. It is consistent with the east side comprehensive plan. We do have a land use plan that is put in place for the Haskellville area is where this property is located. And so it is consistent with that plan. Any zone change request is a legislative action of the city council. And so that is part of your deliberation tonight. You will need to determine if the zoning is appropriate, if it is consistent with the plan, and if the timing is correct. Subdivision, preliminary and final, will need to be granted by the city council in order for the applicant to move forward. Tonight, we're just requesting preliminary plan approval. There's still some modifications that need to be made to the plans. However, the applicant wanted to receive preliminary plan approval to make sure that he's vested for the use and stinking configuration for him to move forward and finalize the contract with the Lovelace family. So we will be back for final approval, development agreement and other documents. So the specific plan, the subdivision has to be consistent with not only the zoning ordinance, but we do have a specific plan for the area and then of course it's going to be consistent with the general plan. Planning Commission has reviewed and recommended approval to the city council for this project, for both the zone change and the subdivision. And then, of course, it's the city council's decision to review and make a final decision on these applications. And then there will be a development agreement that, upon approval, that development agreement will be prepared and ratified by the city council at the subsequent meeting. So zone change requests, as I mentioned, we do have a land use plan for the east side. We do, you know, we do have the property located within this master plan area. It is shown as a traditional subdivision. So it's anywhere from one quarter to 30 acre lots. The size of the lots range in this particular development from 10,000 square feet up to 20,000 square feet. So there's a good range of lot sizes in here and will transition very well into the neighborhood to the east, as indicated there below. So we've got the traditional neighborhood transition into the township neighborhood. Compliance with state regulations. This is the detail that staff looks at, you know, make sure that the engineering has been, does satisfy our ordinances, we make sure the planning documents or the development is consistent with the planning documents. So we've been working very closely with the landowner on this and the new owner. And I failed to mention that. I know that was included in your staff report, but we do have a new applicant that's finalizing this application. So he will speak to you in a moment. But we do need to satisfy those regulations. A new request with this new applicant is to have a deferral agreement to defer, to delay the installation of improvements along Salem Canal Road. As indicated in that picture, we do have an open ditch irrigation facility there. We have a high-pressure gas line. We've got a wide road with Salem Canal. It is an arterial road. But one of the main reasons for delaying or requesting the deferral is that Central Utah Water Conservancy District is looking at doing a pipeline project in Salem Canal that could impact any improvements along this corridor. And so we'll discuss that a little bit further. But it is requested that only those improvements along Salem Canal be deferred until a future date. And then, of course, the development agreement, as mentioned before, we would need to ratify any of the approval of the city council. So the applicant and the city are on the same page as we look forward to the improvement and the development phase of this project. Housing product. Housing product has changed. We had a previous applicant that was, that had a certain product, was working with a certain builder of how they wanted to build those homes. The applicant, Jeffrey Capizoli, is proposing his product, of course, in this development. He does build custom homes. And that is why he's wanting to acquire this development and provide additional opportunities for his business. So this is just some pictures of some of the products that he provides. In regard to size, style, use of materials, it's very similar to what Mr. Christensen, who was the previous applicant, is what he was proposing. So as far as public input and the council decision and discussion, the land use application, there's two. So we do have two motions. We do need to take action on the zone change first and then make a decision on the subdivision. Now, public input, this project has stretched out a little bit, so we've done it a little bit differently. So we did have a public hearing at the planning commission meeting. They did forward a recommendation with the city council. There was a public hearing that was scheduled back in September when this project was scheduled to go to the city council. However, two days before the meeting, the applicant came in and said, pull it from the agenda. But because it was noticed, the city council felt that it was appropriate to take public comment at that time. And so there were some residents of the Haskellville area that provided comment that night, but we did close the public hearing. Because there has been a change in applicant, in housing product, some of the other, and the request for a deferral, we felt it would be appropriate to notify the residents in the area again of another public hearing. So we have noticed a public hearing for tonight to receive any input that they may have on any changes that Mr. Capizoli is requesting as far as this development. The layout hasn't changed, the number of units, none of that has changed. It's just been housing product, the deferral and some of those minor details. So another public hearing scheduled for tonight and then your options for motion is you can remand it back to staff or the planning commission. If you felt like additional study was needed on any of those items, you can approve with conditions or if you can deny it. Especially on the subdivision, if the zone change isn't approved, then the subdivision needs to be denied. If the zone change is approved, you can still make a motion on the subdivision of whether or not it does comply with city regulations. And then, of course, any motion should include findings for your decision. So Mayor, that is my presentation. Unless you have any questions for staff, I'll turn it back over to you.
Any questions, Council? For staff? Mr. Capizoli, is he here?
Yes.
Would you like to approach?
Sure.
Questions for me?
Council, any questions?
We have sidewalks.
Both sides?
There's a platter strip too between the back of current and the sidewalk here, so...
It's a bad pivot head, stop.
That's right. What'd you say?
How wide?
56 feet.
I know that when this had come up before council, before, they had discussed the concern of that being an auxiliary road that's half county-owned, half city-owned, and it wasn't quite wide enough. Are you doing anything to address the fact that the increased amount of traffic on that main road, 1300 East, is there? Is hopeful that it comes quick, or?
Yeah, we're just developing where we're touching that city road, not further down to the north also.
Isn't that city or county? That road. So what's here, so to answer Councilman Christensen? So this section of the road will all be city. But as he was referring, he was referring to what's north of there, so then you're going to the county area and it does narrow down quite a bit. And so we have reached out to Utah County based on the comments that we've received from you in the past and let them know of those concerns. They don't have any immediate plans to widen that, but we have approached them about the concerns there with, you know, traffic and speeding and the increased, you know, number of traffic counts with this new development being in there, but currently it is not anticipated for any type of widening. I think they're anticipating that over time, the property will be annexed into the city and developed.
Of course, that's a good...
And the widening will take care of that type. But we did at least reach out to them to let them know of your concerns.
So as long as it's on the radar, I think that's all you can really do. So do we have jurisdiction as Payson police officers for 1300 East north of that development? Or is that considered?
Jurisdiction is relevant. I mean,
Right.
A police officer has authority throughout the state, but normally we don't go into the county as city police officers unless we're invited by the sheriff's office or something. But especially where it's, I believe, north of there is still farmland.
Correct.
And so it continues on and then I think it goes back into the city, down to the farm road.
One of the reasons that we don't routinely go out there and speaking from my past life is that when you write citations out there, it goes to a different chord, it doesn't come to one. It's a little bit of a hassle.
Okay. So I'm good otherwise?
Any other questions?
No, I like, I like the look of the houses. I like the fact that each one is different than the other, that it doesn't, it isn't a subdivision look.
Yeah, it's not going to have, like, a lot of the builders today are just giving you five options in a subdivision.
Right.
This will be a custom home.
Yeah, I like that.
We have an architectural committee that will be reviewing those plans. We've kind of done a little bit of subdivision requirements on the architecture and then we're going to be, three of our people in our company will be the architectural committee to make sure that that standard stays through.
I too would like to chime in here. I believe it would be a good addition to our city and more population that we desperately need to continue to grow as a city. So I appreciate your ability to and wanting to develop that.
Great. I have a question. This came up before. Just want to make sure it's been addressed. I'm sure it has, but just the irrigation that goes through there, that's been all addressed, so...
I've been trying to get ahold of Salem, but it's been...
I'm talking about for the other farmers farther down?
Yes, I went and talked to the Lovelaces on Saturday, informed them what we'd be probably doing. We just don't know until we get the things staked out. So nobody has put any stakes in the ground to find out where the property actually ends and it starts. Until that happens, then we can start discussing with the property owners around that thing to see what we can do about the irrigation and things like that.
Okay, if there's no other questions, Council, I'll entertain a motion for, to open a public hearing.
I'll make a motion. We open the public hearing?
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
And this is for the E1 and E2 on this agenda, so all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have opened a public hearing. Same rules apply as to earlier public hearing. If anyone would like to come up and express their views on this development, please do so and try to keep your comments to about three minutes.
My name is Ludine Haskell and I own property next to where the building. And Mr. Capizoli came and talked to me and my sons and informed us of how he would like to work with us. When Andre Christensen was doing this, I handed a letter and I made some stipulations that I would like him to be interested in. And I gave one of those letters to Mr. Capizoli and he's been very nice to try and work with us. Our main purpose was the irrigation ditch that goes down between my property and the Lovelace. I don't know which property it's on. I don't know if it's on mine or his. But anyway, that is our main concern because we really need that use of that ditch. Thank you.
Just a real quick question. That has been addressed satisfactorily to you. Is that right?
I think so. I think Mr. Capizoli will work with us.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
Any other comment at this time? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. What we'll need to do is do two separate motions. I'll entertain a motion on the ordinance zone map.
I'll make a motion that we approve the zone change from R1A to R19 on parcel 300500094, located near 1300 East and Salem Canal Road.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Got two?
We second it every time.
Okay, this one we have to have a roll call, it's running. That's where I'm going. Councilman Christensen?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. The second motion is on the preliminary plan for Ashley Ridge. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion on the preliminary plan for Ashley Ridge, located at approximately 1300 East and Salem Canal Road. A couple of things in there that that the deferral agreement for, I'd like the deferral agreement for the Salem Canal Road, I'd like that to be bonded. And then also that we, that the irrigation ditch is taken care of and include any findings.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Councilwoman Carter seconded it. Again, this will necessitate a roll call vote. We'll start with Councilwoman.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to section three. Gladys, do you have some information on the general plan?
Mayor, Council, just as you are aware, we've been going through this process. We put the RFP out and then got the responses and then we had seven responses that came in and staff reviewed those and scored them and then obviously recommended. We went to an interview phase, which we just did yesterday, so we had Councilwoman Hyatt and the mayor as part of that with four staff members. And after, we were in there pretty much all day. We went through it and we, you know, we obviously had three qualified firms that we felt and and we all talked about it after each one and then at the very end, we kind of compared them and we all felt that the Fragonesi was was the one that we wanted to recommend. They're they're a planning group out of Oregon, but they have, everyone else is local on the engineering and on the, you know, the avenue consultants and everybody else that's associated with that. We just felt that they would be the best one to go with out of all the ones that we received. And so that's who we're recommending to you guys based on what we've all done and with the help of the mayor and Councilwoman Hyatt, so... I don't know if you guys have any questions on anything that we went through, but...
Yeah, what are the prices of these?
The low started in the low 300s and the high was over 900,000, the highest one. And the three that we interviewed, two of them were in the 500,000 range and one was in the low 300s. And so the one that we picked, Fragonesi, they were 525,000. But we felt out of the group that that would be the best fit for us and what, you know, what we felt was the best route to help us get where we need to go, so...
Did we budget 500,000, like?
We only budgeted half of it right now. We budgeted, what, like 250?
But we planned on another two.
Yeah. Well, they'll have to be in the next budget, but we knew that this was a long enough process that we didn't need to encumber all that money for this budget year, so we figured we would, you know, do the rest of it with the next budget.
So we were pretty close on it.
So obviously you'll need to approve that with the next year's budget, although we can finish it, but... But yeah, we were, you know, we were kind of figuring it would probably be anywhere around there. We were a little surprised how far the spread was, you know, on the RFPs, but...
What's the timeline on that? How long will it take them to complete it?
We talked to them about that, about a year and a half from when we get started, so, you know, we'll have some initial public meetings and some open houses and stuff to get a lot of input and then the project will move forward and it'll, you know, with the master plans and that kind of after we get that. So the strategic plan and the branding have got to get done first. And then we'll move into the general plan and the master plans after those get done, so...
So why'd you pick Fragonesi over the other two? What are the qualifications? How's the decision process?
You know, out of the interviews, we just felt that they had, you know, they're a very qualified planning group. They've done projects all over the country. Plus, on the engineering, at least that was the one I was the most familiar with. Jill and them were more familiar on the planning side. But on the engineering, we felt like they have the... they, they had the best team out of everybody and then they've, kinda, I, I can't speak for everybody else, but we kinda, I felt more comfortable with, with them, just meet personally, was just a feeling when, when they presented to us and, and we just, after discussion, we, you know, everyone wasn't unanimous at the start to say that that was who we were gonna go with, but after discussing it, going back and forth, that was how it kinda came to at the end, so.
Who was unanimous?
At the end, yes. It wasn't to start.
No, it was, I mean, they, they all had things that are really good about them, it's just, you know, you really had to talk things through, it, it was quite the discussion.
But it was good to have everyone involved, cause you know, we, everyone's got a different perspective on how they see it and it was really good that, it wasn't just one or two people trying to decide it, there was six, six of us in there trying to make that decision on how we need to move forward, so.
So, I know this takes a lot of work, how much, did they give you any idea how much staff time this will take, cause we're talking budgets, are there any hours type?
Not in hours, no, but it, to get a good plan, it's gonna take a lot of you on the council's time, a lot of staff's time, a lot of the residents and business owners and, you know, the more we have everyone involved, the better plan we'll get, the less we have then, you know, you're gonna, you're just getting the minority making a lot of those decisions and recommendations, so.
Going to take an awful lot of public input, as you said, and that's critical in the, in the process to, to present it in a way that everybody can buy into it.
Exactly.
When they go to do the public input, are they the ones who will be advertising and putting it together and tackling it, or is that something that we're doing?
Yeah, that, I mean, well, though with our help, you know, be doing it, yeah, they'll, they'll be doing it, the running the show, running the meeting and doing all that, we'll obviously be very involved, but.
Right.
Yeah, we, we didn't, the real reason we put this out is we don't have the staff to do, to tackle this beast, but you know, it will still cause us a lot of, of, you know, meetings and stuff because without it, it's not our plan, it's some consults through something together and then we just took it, so.
Right.
But I did wanna make a comment, they all did say the same thing, that doing all three together is like, they haven't done that before, but that's the way it should be done and we actually saved two to three times the amount that we would've paid if we would've done each thing separately, because then they can all work on it as, at the same time. So I didn't know that, I think we learned that when they came in and that was, you know, that was a real eye opener for me. And I, I know that they were happy about that too, just, but it is a lot of work when I, when we talk a lot of work, there's a lot of work.
It'd be over a million dollars if they would've done this all separately.
And it's all super new.
And taking a lot longer.
And this is where, you know, when we were talking about getting input from the city, because when we're out talking to all these different people, they get to give their input, I mean, and they have awesome ideas how to get these, you know, how to get people in, involved in it and when we talk about like the rodeo or, or a four bay or maybe a, a rec center, this is something we can add in there too, because you're gonna be dealing with all these people, they're gonna be telling you what it is they want.
I'm actually excited about the, the whole process, cause I think it'll bring us together as a community, we'll have more conversations, you feel, I, I think residents will feel more of the process if you do it this way all together over a short period of time, well, relatively short period of time, you know, if we spread it all out, you know, it kinda ties back into that whole team pacing concept and, and I think people wanna know, I think they wanna say, and so I'm excited to do this and to involve them.
Yeah, Jason Associates is part of the group that we've recommended and she said, it, it will be painful, it will be a, you know, it will be a painful process, but when you get done, you'll look at it and think it's a great thing that you've done it this way, so. She didn't hold back that it, it will be, you know, it will definitely take some pain, but it'll be good when we're done.
It also was brought out that if we don't do them all three at a time, we could run into some problems having to redo what we've already done, so it's definitely better to have all we have done.
Exactly.
I think with, when we did the South Meadows, we had a lot of involvement, but that was just one little area, so when we're doing the whole city, this is gonna be a big project, so.
This is one of the reasons, you know, when we, we need that director to help, because there's gonna be a lot of stuff there.
Okay, any other questions? I think this is one of them that we may or may not need a motion, but I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion on this item. Council, is there a motion to accept the original?
I'll go make a motion and we set, accept Fragonese to do our strategic plan, general plan, and master plans.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Travis, could you do one thing maybe, is just get with them and see what it would cost to go back and do our old infrastructure and see what, you know, if they were gonna do that at the same time?
Okay, yeah, I'll get, I've gotta let all the firms, well, one of them's here, but I'll let the other, the other two know tomorrow and then I'll find out.
Okay, we'll go ahead and sort of the next one, number four, final plat for Spring Creek Town Homes proposed on southwest corner of the intersection of eleven thirty south and seventeen west in the South Meadows Planning Area. Do you know, you have some presentation for us?
I have a short presentation, actually.
Do you want, do you wanna wait until another councilman gets back or you want to go there?
We've probably moved forward, I would think.
Okay, let's move forward.
Does it have sidewalks? As long as they're sidewalks.
You may need to be in here, yes, the applicant has addressed sidewalks, so anyway, so moving on. So the, the land use applications that the applicant has requested approval for are the zone changes, subdivision. As, just giving everybody a little bit of history with this, the zone change is already being approved and the preliminary plan has already been approved. And so when the preliminary plan was approved, they gave the applicant direction of certain things that you wanted to see in the development, there was white inner road and sidewalks on both sides and, and those things, and so the applicant has been working on those and is bringing the proposal back for final plat approval. So the locator map is shown here, so via the south and west of Ridgestone condominiums. So you've got I fifteen that's to the east and then it is on the corner of eleven thirty south and seventeen hundred west. So the applicant is proposing a townhome project, has fifty-three units, this is the general layout, showing the location of the structures, where the community facilities will be as far as parks and pavilions and other amenities, the RV parking, which was requested by the city council, but here's the general layout there. So land use applications, as I mentioned, zone change is already approved, it was approved last summer, subdivision preliminary plan was approved last summer and the applicant will need to receive approval from the city council for the final plat, following final plat approval, then staff will prepare a development agreement for consideration by the city council at a subsequent meeting. Density and housing product that the applicant, so just as a general overview of the development, I don't wanna spend a lot of time going through all the preliminary plan items, we've already taken care of those, but it is ten units to the acre, it is consistent with our South Meadows Planning Area and so, you know, there's two projects tonight that we're following a master plan that was done for those areas, so that part is exciting to already have the direction there. So the tenement to the acre has fifty-three units, there's eight buildings, there's two-story and sequal story units and all of them will be designed and the materials will be consistent with our mechanism. So project landscaping, the applicant is looking at doing more zero scape landscaping in this development to conserve water, and it's still a very attractive design that will be done in the development, but will also be less water usage. Project amenities, there's been some changes with that, so the ones on the bottom, the three bullet points there, those are required by ordinance, we do have an amenity schedule in our ordinance that is based on the number of units in the development. The applicant was proposing a clubhouse and a splash pad with the original proposal, but has chosen to remove those for the development and he may want to address that. So items on remand, so these were the items that were on the preliminary plan. All of the conditions of preliminary plan approval still are, need to be addressed by the applicant, some of them cannot be completed until final plat approval's been given and that's why he is here tonight. But the items that were put on remand after preliminary plan approval were, the city council felt that the north-south road, so seventeen forty west should be thirty feet of asphalt rather than the, the reduced that he was showing on, on that road prior to that. Provided sidewalks on both sides of the street, so the, you know, the preliminary plan was just showing one, the applicant has modified it to show on both sides of the street. Wanted to provide parking and storage area for at least ten recreational vehicles, that has been incorporated. And then this one was more of just an FYI, but that we needed to complete the Syntec fencing all in the first phase, that was, the applicant wanted to do it in phases as we continued throughout the development, there were some concerns raised by the adjacent property owner, city council felt that the fencing needed to be completed all at once. And then of course, satisfy the staff condition, so as I mentioned, all the other conditions still remain, the applicant will continue working with the applicant on those, but we do need the final plat approval and we're for him to announce in this process. So compliance with regulations, as I mentioned, project CCNRs, the applicant has to be in a project CCNRs for, for consideration, those will be finalized, signed, and they will be recorded at the same time as the plat and the development agreement. And then again, development agreement, which I mentioned several times, didn't realize I had it listed three times, but a decision by the city council, it is a subdivision, so preliminary approval's been granted, so it is the final plat. So you can approve the final plat with the conditions, deny the final plat if it's determined that it's inconsistent with city regulations, or remand it back to staff under the planning commission for additional review. And then any motion should include findings for the decision.
Can you take it back to?
Yes.
Clear the aisle. Or it showed the RV parking?
Yes, right there.
How big is that RV parking?
Um, the applicant, now right off the top of his head, I'd have to look at the plans.
It's forty by, forty feet by a hundred.
So, so forty feet wide and then a hundred and fifty feet deep with a twenty-foot wide access into it, so how, how big is the stall?
Stalls are, they're ten-foot wide stalls.
And how, how long?
Twenty-five feet long.
Okay, and then, so how much is that little road that's right by it? How, it's like?
Twenty feet.
Is that twenty feet?
That's twenty feet, yeah.
So how are you gonna get a twenty-three foot pickup in there to pull out the RV?
So what's, the plan is, is there are motorized dollies that, so that is gonna be purchased and included as part of the projects of it, so the vehicles won't, motor vehicles won't be allowed in that area, but what you do is you park your, your RV there and have your motorized dolly.
And Mr. Nixon, if we can have you come up to the microphone, so we can get it in the minutes.
So the plan is to have a, there's, there's several different motorized dollies out there that are meant for, for personal use, for people moving their RVs into their garage or to the side of the garage and that's one of those, and one of those would be available to move, to maneuver RVs into, into the parking spaces.
Are they driven?
No, they're just, they're hand, and it goes very slow, you know, but.
And I just don't see that.
I, well, what I, if, there's, if you go on, oh shoot, there's website, there's several websites if you go in that have, that have these, battery-operated.
I, I know, I know what they are, but to me, if I have some kind of trailer there, I'm not gonna wanna go find that little thing and, okay, go pull it out, now back your truck up and hook onto it and then, okay, now we gotta put it back in. People aren't gonna do that, they're not gonna use it. I wouldn't do it, I wouldn't use that thing to, and so it's gonna force them to go someplace else and pay to put their RV there, because you have a twenty-three foot truck, you know, twenty to thirty-three foot, you can't get out, you're gonna hit whatever that unit thirty-four? To me, you, you need to have a forty-foot wide place there so the truck can back up and, and hook on whatever it is and take off.
There's angles.
I know, so even at that, you think about it, can you get a twenty-foot, he's only got twenty-foot right there, anyway, you can't even turn in, because if you were to turn in.
The answer is yes, you can.
I know it is, but what I'm saying is, to me, that's not usable. It's, it's not really a feasible plan. I would pick up unit thirty-four and make it so, since you have to have an RV, they told you you had to have an RV park. You need to have a usable RV park. To me, that's not usable. So if I were to move in your RV park, I mean, to your park, your subdivision here, that, that width, that length is like twenty-four, that's, that's as long as you can have it, is twenty-four?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. So if you have a thirty-foot or thirty-six-foot trailer, you can't leave it there.
Correct.
Okay, so let's say we have a short trailer, like I have a little twenty-foot toy hauler, that's really little, okay, that would fit in there, but I couldn't get my truck in there and I'm not gonna come to you and say, hey, can I use the dolly, or I'm not gonna say, where's the dolly, I need to get my.
Oh, the dolly would be stored there.
I realize that.
Okay.
But that is not, like, that's not a convenient thing, that, to me, I don't, I don't think that we should start allowing something like that, if we, if we, you go over to the condos and I've seen they, there's a big forty-foot trailer in there, I've gone and looked at it personally, they can get in there and they can get it out. So if you're gonna offer something, why would you offer something that people are gonna use, because your people, I don't think are gonna, you know, unless they have a little trailer that they put their little four-wheeler on, but even, you know, they can probably pick that one up and pull it out, but anybody with the trailer, they're gonna wanna pull in there with their truck to get it out. I, I don't wanna see us go to something like this, because then the next development, you're setting a precedent and the precedent's been set and all you're doing is like making people mad. That's how I look at it.
I understand. So as far as the twenty-foot width, that's, that's, I guess, at, referring to Ridgestone, I think they're, you know, they've got the twenty, the diagonal parked in there, they've got, I wanna say twenty-two feet, so it's, it's comparable, what.
But they can get in and get their vehicle, they can get in there with their vehicle to get it out.
Theresa, I don't know that that would be an issue, because you're not getting a thirty-five footer in there anyway.
No, I, no.
Because I, I would be really surprised if you didn't get a twenty-five turn around in there.
Turn around, no, I don't.
Brett, you can't, you can't get your truck in there.
No, I'm talking about in the streets, cause you, you'd almost have to back it in off the main highway. You see, and so that's, that would be more my concern, but I, I think it's possible, the dolly, I don't understand the dolly, you could pull it in there, grab it and if it's like a forklift, you can do zero turns, you can turn that thing around on twenty-two feet, so I'm, I'm sure that that's been looked into. I, I, I think that if it's there and they wanna use it, then they're, they're gonna be bound by that dolly, otherwise.
But we are setting a precedent for all future developments like this. Is this what you want this precedent to be?
So I've got, I've got two thoughts that are conflicting a little bit, my first thought is HOAs fall apart all the time, so my, my biggest concern is what happens when it falls apart, like they all seem to fall apart and you've got a dolly that can't be used, that's my concern. So, but on the flip side, I wasn't here for this vote, I know that on, talking about precedents is precedence, we, we, on others, said they don't need RV parking and the ordinance is that you can't park your RVs on the street anywhere there and I'm, I don't know, I, I see your concern, but part of it too is like, when I buy something, if I've got a trailer, I'm gonna look into it and if, if it's not what I want, I'm not gonna buy it.
But if you have people move in that already have it, plus it's, the street's only twenty-three foot wide, so there's no place else to put them, you have to, would have to put them there.
Well, I guess, whoops.
I guess then if they, if they couldn't put them there, and I'm just being the devil advocate here, if they couldn't, they'd have, they'd have to go somewhere else to park them, they wouldn't be able to park them anywhere if they didn't.
And that's what we've done on others, is they, they've gotta go to a, one of those trailer park that you just go store.
The townhomes right across the street that had to put in all of theirs, so how do we tell them, you know, we told them they had to do that and, and he's putting these in, but he's not, what I'm saying is if we allow this, cause it is so small, what's gonna happen with the next person that comes here, because they're gonna say, well, you let them do this and you let them do that, and this, I, I sat here when Scott said, you will put the RV park in, because other people have had to do it.
I, I also think, I mean, we'll know next time too, I mean, we gotta give it a chance somewhere, at what point do we draw the line?
I just think.
You can't have ten acres of.
I think when, it's, it's five and a quarter.
I, I know, but you can't have ten acres of RV parking in five and a quarter facility, that's, you know, I mean, you gotta balance it too.
Well, maybe even go down to like eight or something, you make it smaller, but you have to have the, the bigger space where they can pull in and get it out, otherwise, I'm an RVer, okay? Otherwise, I'm RV here, okay?
Oh, no, I understand.
I deal with this. I, if I had to live in someplace like that, I would have to, I would have to pay to go, and I'm sure they're probably gonna have to pay because you don't have fifty-three RV places for them to park, so they're gonna have to pay to park there. So if you're paying to park there.
Is that what it is, part of the, or is that what some of the HOA decides on?
So, so the plan would be they would, they would have to pay. So I've, I've, I've talked to Jason's super, who's a, um, Advantage Property Management. They manage a hundred and thirty projects from, from Santa Claus to Park City, Salt Lake. And of those, of those a hundred and thirty projects, ten of them have RV parking. So typically, there's, they don't include RV parking. And, and where they do include RV parking is problematic. And the reason is, is if you, if you, if you don't charge to park there, they, you could junk. It becomes a junkyard. Uh, and if you do park there, I mean, if you do charge to park there, they go someplace else where it's more secure, I mean, they spend a lot of money on these RVs, it's more secure, and so they sit empty. And actually, I've, I've looked at this, if you, at Ridgestone, which has a hundred and eighty units, they've got twenty-six stalls. Uh, the maximum use in the last six months has been fourteen stalls. And I completely might have got, but, but in of those, I think the maximum was for recreational vehicles, trailers or camp trailers, whatever. Most of it is actually old vehicles or, or utility trailers, work trailers. Actually, and today I went by, actually, I've gone a couple times, but by Maples at Brookside, which has over, I think it's three hundred and twenty units, eighty-eight of which are townhomes, the rest are single-family, but that, their RV parking services, three hundred and twenty units, there was a total of nine vehicles in there, and from, and that, that Advantage Management, they actually manage that HOA for that, for Brookside, for Maples, and you're saying of those, two of those are associated with the townhomes, the, there's, and there's eighty-eight townhomes there. And of those, that, that, and that had actually six RVs, a couple utility vehicle, a couple and, and an old car.
Well, I realize, because we, I'm finding in zoning, there's a guy that lives there, I mean, people are parking them in their driveways where they're not supposed to be parked, and this is when we come back to the HOA, they're not going by the rules of what they're supposed to go by. This is why I don't wanna get into this. HOAs just tend to go by the wayside after so many years, so it's just like you said, who's, who's gonna take care of it? Who's, who's gonna take care of, like, if that breaks? Or what if it breaks and people are going, okay, now what do we do? What do you do if you're getting ready to go somewhere and that thing's broke? How do you, you can't get in there and get it out.
I, I like the fact that you're using a management company to manage the HOA. Is that not what you implied?
Oh, sure, that'd be, yeah.
So, I mean, that, that does help it stay together a little bit better, but.
And the town, HOA can't go away, 'cause the H, you know, is, is responsible for the structures, I mean, on the visual, it's, so it's always gonna have some kind of function as far as having to pay for.
'Cause they're all connected.
Yeah, I mean, there's common, a lot of common facilities there that are, I mean, including the individual units that are required.
Mark, how is this gonna affect, if we let something come in here like this? You're the attorney, we're hosting.
We can put into our ordinance appropriate RV parking sections. At this point in time, we don't have that. Similar to road widths and things like that, we speak to those issues, we can speak to RV parking, businesses, things like that, if we choose to do that, by their ordinance. That would take away from any precedence, if you will, that, that in deciding and without, without anything given right.
I, I would just like to see something along that line. I, as a city, I wanna protect us so that people can't come in with little loopholes and say, well, so-and-so did it, so-and-so did it.
I see. So you're, you're saying, Mark, that we're not setting a precedent here, we can address it at a later date?
What I'm saying is, is if we address it at a later date, it, it takes precedence over any.
After this.
Yes. Anything that we, we have done up to that point.
Right. So we see this all the time with, with, back in the day, we didn't have any sidewalks, and we said, oh, this isn't very good, so now we require sidewalks.
Yeah.
So things change all the time as, as needed. Wasn't this also part of the negotiation? There was like a clubhouse or a RV, or was this part of the, I can't remember. I wasn't, I wasn't here on the vote.
That's a little different. Just wanna, so, just as far as precedent goes, I mean, the city approved the depot not too long ago with the town, I don't know, a couple hundred units with no RV parking, so.
But they're apartments.
Sure.
They're, they're not being owned, they are apartments. That's, that's the difference between.
But I don't see the people buying these townhouses having a hundred and fifty thousand dollars' worth of RVs.
Well, no, I see people now buying townhomes who, it's like my sister, fifty-five years old, and she's selling her home now because her kids are all gone, and she wants to get into a smaller place. But she does have a trailer. This is.
Well, so again, I, I, I get, kinda go back to the free market on this, you know, if I, if I've got a trailer and I'm looking at a place to shop, I'm not gonna buy here if that's a concern to me. Like, there's a lot of other places, and that's where, and I've got the freedom. If I don't look into that, that's my fault.
But I would still think if you're gonna, that's wasted space to me. I just.
Well, I, I, I agree it's wasted space for a different reason.
To me, it's wasted space, and to me, if, if there was some way around that and you don't have to have RV.
Do we have mandated?
Put a, put a clubhouse back in.
Well, I mean, that, that's a separate issue, and I would like to address that, but, but as, as far as on the RV parking, anyway, so, ten, ten spaces, I think, is, is overkill. If, if you want RV parking, as far as enforcement, you know, you talk about the apartments, there they have, there, there's a disincentive to enforce it. Here, the RV enforcement would be by a towing company who has an incentive to enforce it. So I, so I don't think that argument that because it's apartments, you don't need RV parking. I think when, I think the fact that there are garages here that can handle small RVs is offsets some of that. In addition, you got large commercial storage within two miles, with a couple of them within two miles of this, which will end up being as convenient and probably more secure than, than this location.
Just to play a greedy city person, do we keep a sales tax on RV parking? No? I'd say that's a good incentive right there.
So I, I guess, I, I, I would like the city council, I think the plan works, and I understand you have problems with it, but it does work, I've reviewed it with staff and that. But I think, if, if you want to, if you really think that RV parking is necessary, which I don't think it is, and I'd like to be rid of it, I, I would think you could reduce it to three or four stalls, which would be proportioned, would be what appears to be the use in other locations such as Ridgestone and, and Maples and, and Greenridge, all of those. If you look at, compare the number of units that they have and the actual number of vehicles that's, recreational vehicles that are stored there, three or four would be more appropriate. And then, and actually, in that case, the issue that you have would go away with the need of, need of motorized dolly.
Joe?
Yes.
So how many units do the condos have?
Of RV parks?
So how many units are there?
One eighty.
And then how many parking places are there?
I'm not sure.
Twenty-six.
Okay, so what's that percentage, people? Come on, math, this is, my phone quit working, I can't let go.
Your question, Mr. Finch.
So it's thirty percent. So thirty percent of fifty-three, what's that, five point three, five, ten, fifteen?
Well, keep in mind that only half of those stalls have been used.
I know, but I'm still saying is, that is what we require them to put in. So.
Well, that, that was ten years ago, so things change.
And the last project, which is, how, how many units are in the depot?
A hundred and sixty.
So similar size, that's zero.
But again, they're rentals. I, I can't put, I can't put those together because your townhomes hopefully will be bought and not rentals.
I, I just crunched the numbers, this is point one eight percent, or eighteen percent of the homes would have one, and the other is fourteen percent. So it's actually a higher ratio on this piece than the other one, that's not being fully used. So. So can you address the not having the clubhouse and the splash pad?
So, so what was, so the other requirement was, was the other couple of requirements that impacted the plan were requiring sidewalk on both sides of the street, and also providing six feet, at six feet additional asphalt on Seventeen Forty West. And what that is, that increased the total impervious area, such, and, and the code requires that you have at least thirty percent that is, that is pervious, open space, and it's because that additional asphalt and concrete pushed me below thirty percent, so I had to get rid of some rooftop. And, and that's why the clubhouse and splash pad and the large pavilion went away. As far as, and, and one of the reasons, from what I, the conversation they had, council had at that time, was the, they, they were requesting thirty feet to increase safety. Transportation planning officials are in consensus that wider roads are less safe. I put a, there was a graphic in the report that shows, you increase the width, people go faster. And in addition, it's just that much more asphalt to cross for pedestrians. So the only, the, the one place where additional asphalt widening lanes is, is appropriate is when you're in a high-speed rural highway. And, and all of the locations, like I say, transportation's, is, unanimous consensus that it's not, not appropriate. And that, well, the, actually narrowing the lanes reduces the speeds and therefore are safer. So, anyway, so I, I, I'd like to get rid of the extra six feet of asphalt, but I understand the, the extra sidewalk, but if, if I could get rid of the extra feet, uh, extra six feet of asphalt, then I could put in larger pavilion and clubhouse potentially.
I agree. Clubhouse, if you get rid of the RV park?
I think it'd be easier.
Would you?
Would I? Uh, would I put the clubhouse in if I got rid of the RV? Yes, yeah, I, I, yeah, I'd rather have, I'd rather put the money into, into a clubhouse than I would, I, the RV is gonna be a detriment to the project as far as I'm concerned, as far as aesthetics and that, I, I, it's not, it's not an amenity that would attract anybody, particularly since someone, like I say, ends up having to cost just as much to park there or more than, than some other location.
I just have one thing, I'm taking out the splash pad and the, and the clubhouse. Just because we required a wider road and you lost some houses, doesn't mean we have to offset that with taking away some amenities. That could be part of what you just lose because we required a wider road instead of, well, I lost some houses, so I can't put in these other amenities, and I, I don't know if that's, that's right, so.
I understand. I mean, but you gotta, if, if I, if I take units out, that, those units are what's paying for that clubhouse. So it's kind of, you, you, it's kind of a double whammy that, that I have.
Well, I understand that, it just depends on, on the margin that you get, it's might not be as big as you, you would like, so. And I, I understand I deal with it all the time, so. I, I would like to see at the least that splash pad put back in, so.
As, as a newcomer, I need to ask a stupid question. It is mandated that you have those?
No.
RV spots?
RV spots?
RV spots, yes.
It, it's up to the, it's, uh, I have to address it, is what the code says, is that you have to address it. And my, my addressing is that commercial RV parking is, is in the close proximity, and, and also each unit has a two-car garage, except, well, except for, excuse, except for seven of them that have, only have a one-car garage, but obviously the vast majority of them have a two-car garage that is available for parking small RVs.
And how wide are your streets?
So the, the two east, shorter east-west streets are, there's twenty-four feet of asphalt plus, plus a foot of gutter, so twenty-six feet from curb base to curb base. On the fourteen-seventy, the, the longer road, that's thirty feet of asphalt.
And that was required?
That's city council required. It's not required by any other code. It's just, so it's because the city thought it was safer, and, and, and in fact, it's not.
Well, I, I've read those articles that you put, put in the, in there, and that's, that's, it's not unanimous, it's in dispute, too. The people you quoted say it is, but I think it's still in dispute.
Well, I think if you, if you look at the, the organizations, trying to remember the National, the National Association of City Transportation Officials, I'm thinking there are recommendations in there.
So, if I just make a comment, I've come back to the minutes, and I, I wasn't here on the vote, but in, in all fairness to you, like, I, I don't really like it. If I had my way, I would rather you take out the RV parking and put in a clubhouse or a splash pad of both. But on the flip side, I'm just looking at the notes, and, and the, the vote by the council at the time, on a four-to-zero vote, was that it was approved with thirty-foot wide road and sidewalks on both sides, and including RV parking with at least ten spaces. That's what we voted on, I think that's what we need to stick with. I don't like it, and I, I, and I understand that you're trying to make a profit, but I also don't like the, that one unit is such a, a big deal that, that you're pulling out all this other stuff that we talked about originally. Like, that really frustrates me in working with you. But we voted for it, and I think it should pass, and we've already addressed the issue.
One, one thing, Doug, when we voted, they had the splash pad and they had the, and they had the, um, but it was clubhouse when we voted on it. That was the, that was what brought, was brought to us when we voted.
Well, then that's, that's a different issue that you have to address, then.
I personally think that what you voted on is what you thought you were getting. I don't like the size of the, of the RV park, but I also don't like that he's taken out the splash pad and the, and the clubhouse. I mean, that's what you guys voted on, I was here when you voted, so.
So was there an understanding that the splash pad would be there? Because the vote doesn't stipulate that.
That was what was presented.
Did you have to take away, did you say, uh, the lawn area? You had to take some of the space away just because of the road?
Well, yes, yes, when you put an RV pad, he's got that impervious surface and so on. I, I, I get that, I believe.
Yeah. Let's do a little bit of RV.
I, I don't know what your thoughts are on that, I just, so you get away with the RV pad and add, and, uh, add back the minutes. I don't know what your thoughts are.
That's, I would, too, I'd rather get rid of the RV.
For that many people, I think you need the clubhouse. I think a lot of people.
And because I wasn't, if Scott really wanted the RV party, I, I don't, I think they don't go very well. I'd rather have to go park at a place than to pay for it.
All right, if they're paying for it anyway, there, there's facilities that are much easier to access, in and out, than a, a, a dolly.
Right.
I don't, I don't think that if you have RV pad is, it's a deal breaker whether they get you, get, buy it or not, they're gonna be sold on the, on the assets of the town.
I, I, I say, in my mind, it's almost a negative having a, a pad, I don't think, yeah.
So if you took that out, put the clubhouse and the splash pad back in, those are the amenities that I would think that you would be able to sell to people, especially the clubhouse. People like to have a place they can meet.
Especially when they don't have a place.
Mark, are, are we going down a road that's a good road to go down, or are we not?
Um, I think you're on good ground. I'm looking at the packet from back in twenty seventeen, and you talk about a clubhouse, but he's shown a pavilion, and so.
So it's pavilion, not a clubhouse?
It doesn't have size. It doesn't have signs, it's just a roof with, there are bulbs.
There, yeah, there was bulbs. But the pavilion was attached to the clubhouse.
In my honest opinion, I'd rather see a pavilion than a clubhouse personally because I just think it's a maintenance issue to get run down and if the HOA is dissolved, it becomes an issue, but that's my personal insight.
So if we were to make a, if we were to make a, not a motion, but I guess part of the motion to do away with the RV parks without these, something that you'd be exclusive?
Yes, I, yes, I would. I, I'd also like to have a narrower street. I mean, I, cause I think it's.
I don't think we'll do that.
Okay, I just, just want you to understand that it is not as safe, but, um, but.
This is a retired police officer and I think you might argue with him on that.
I, I've seen people speed on smaller roads too. That's, that's my issue.
So is Jill back there still?
I am Joe, yep.
So I'd like to hear your opinion on this. You are the, the planner, so, um, and your opinion, and I'm guessing if we get your other RV part, or parking, he's gonna want two more houses there, right?
No, but he's gotta put, he's gotta put in the, all the other stuff.
Right, no, he's gonna put that down in the other area. The RV park's gonna be empty.
But there won't be any. But that's the impervious area that's we.
There won't be any additional units?
No, no additional.
Okay.
No, he's that, that's the density there, so there won't be any additional units. I mean, whether or not he, why didn't some of them back out? Cause he did narrow some of them in order to accommodate the RV parking there. So I, I think the council needs to decide what are the most appropriate amenities for this development. The concern of staff throughout this process with this development has been the narrower roads because in case, and we do have a parking problem. You know, we don't just have two cars that fit in a garage. We have multiple drivers living in our homes and they're parking up and down the streets and so enforcement has been an issue. But, but with RV parking, I mean, that's, and I think that's where Councilman Phillips was coming from, is recognizing that we do have those concerns in our community. Yes, we do have a lot of storage unit businesses in our community, so as the applicant has mentioned, you know, there are other options in the community that they can do, but it's for this development, this number of units, this location, what are the most appropriate amenities? Is it a clubhouse? Is it a splash pad? Is it the RV park? That's the direction that we need. And if you felt like the applicant needs to come back with a more defined proposal that it's in writing, that, you know, this is exactly what we're getting with those changes, that's appropriate as well. But the city council does need to determine, you know, with this townhome project, is it RV parking or is it those other amenities? What is gonna make this project better in this particular neighborhood? For those residents? Cause I heard that Stone uses theirs all the time, their clubhouse. I mean, people rent it out too, so it, it is being used constantly.
Yeah. I think with the possibility of children that are, that are going to be there in, in those townhomes, the splash pa, uh, pad would be a good amenity for, for that location rather than a RV park or storage, I should say.
If I might just reference back to the city council packet of, of twenty seventeen, there is a list of amenities that was presented to the city council at that time. Included a clubhouse, eight hundred square feet, including ba, two bathrooms, kitchen, refrigerator range, serving island, a pavilion of nine hundred and sixty square feet, picnic tables, direct access to the clubhouse kitchen, gas barbecue, freestanding barbecue, sink, shuffleboard facilities, picnic areas, two picnic tables, horseshoe pit, freestanding barbecue, volleyball and badminton, playground, nine hundred square feet. They, it indicates C examples and those were pictures of, that were included. Sandlot, two park benches, splash pad, five hundred square feet, C examples, and there were two pictures of, of splash pads. Sports court, basketball, one standard hoop and pickleball, one net court.
Are these all examples or were these all going to be crammed into that?
These were all listed as amenities under the Spring Creek Townhomes background information at this location. This was what was submitted to the council. And, and the reason I point that out is there was the discussion of what was represented and it wasn't necessarily in the minutes, but it, it is included in the packet and that's, that's part of that.
So what's the legal?
We can, we can go down the path of your, your directive. If you wanna, um, um, ask him to reevaluate given these considerations, um, and I, I, as I was looking, I was quite curious what you decided with the RV parking.
So, but if that's what was presented to us, is that, is he, like, is that something that he can opt out of doing that? Or, or do we need to go back to the drawing? I mean, and, and I understand the financial burden that that would place on you and that becomes another discussion. I'm just wondering, like, if that was, is that the agreement or is that like an example and the only thing that's legally agreed to is, is that thirty-foot wide road and the RV parking and?
The, um, the presentation and the decision that was made by the council are, were both taken into consideration and he has come back and presented today with what he feels meets those requirements. If you're not satisfied with his, the way that he's configured in that, you can ask him to reconsider and, and readdress some of the issues that he addressed in a prior council meeting, this list of things. It was, it's give and take because.
Sure.
These aren't things that are in our ordinance, but these are things that he has presented as part of the project approval.
So. The, the ordinance requires a clubhouse if you're, well, sixty units in order.
Okay, so could I make a motion?
Yeah, please make a motion.
Remend it back to staff and even come back with a plan with, with what he served today with the RV, doing away with the RV park, with putting the amenities back in and come present to us again.
So could I ask if, if, I mean, it's pretty easy to take the RV parking out and, and the layout hasn't changed. I mean, put in the clubhouse and splash pad back in. I mean, that area hasn't changed, so it's, it would be fairly simple to follow what was on the preliminary plan as far as the clubhouse and pavilion and splash pad, so.
I would like to see it. I would like to see it when you do it.
Well, yeah, so I, I hate to have the, so much back and forth. I mean, that's, like, he's come and gone. I mean, how, why is so much of this coming to us?
Do we have the original plan? Can we throw it out there and prove the one that you.
The preliminary plan that was denied?
Back a month later and. Do you have a picture of that? Can we approve that plan?
Does there, the difference, the other difference would be that didn't have the sidewalk on both sides and it didn't have the, it just was.
So it's not being made to require.
I think would be advantageous to have everything down, set down and that's something we could see.
I guess I, I'm not seeing that it's gonna change, I mean, I can see something.
So can we amend it back to staff and approve it subject to them making sure that they're happy with all the amenities or?
Well, I think we need to add what was, what was presented because that's what you guys originally agreed upon. That was what fighting and zoning, you know, thought was going on. So I think kind of, like, we kind of need to go what was originally there. You know, we asked him to make the road wider. That was just something he had to do, but he still presented it. I think it needs to show on there, so we know it's there and there's no question of what he has to do and what we agree on.
Give, give us some guidance, Mark. Tell us what.
And, and I'll ask in your motion, you give the same force to staff. You give them guidance in that if you're looking to, um, back away from the motion six months ago, however long ago, it's almost a year ago, but, um, if, if you're looking back away from the, the RV parking stalls, um, then put that in your motion. That's direction to the, the staff and to the developers so that they can work those things out. And if sidewalk and the thirty-foot road is still there, make that, make that clear. That's not something you're, you're backing away from.
Yeah, I mean, one of the problems I have is, is, is Mr. Nixon here is on a yo-yo because one council said one thing, the other council said another thing, and that's unfair to him to do that. And so if we send it back to the staff to decide what they like and then we still don't like it and then he's gotta come back here again, that, that's not a good position for a builder to be in. I can't imagine any builder wanting to build in a city that kept doing that. So like, if we're gonna give instruction from here versus from staff, it needs to be pretty clear so he can, he can do it and we get this thing done.
Right, no, I'd agree with it, but he made changes when he brought back to, took out the stuff that was presented to us. So that, yeah. He, the changes weren't made by us.
Mr. Nixon, would, would that, is that something that you would be agreeable to, to, to take that RV storage out and add those amenities back in with a thirty-foot wide road?
Yes.
Okay.
So what, what I would request, I, I, I think you could do that and staff can enforce that, that if I put in a clubhouse and splash pad as shown on the preliminary plan would save me the time of, where if you're going through.
Is that possible to do that? And we, do what we?
And I think you can.
Okay, so we didn't have to come back?
Cause it's what I'm understanding from the conversation is that you want the amenity package that was approved at the time of preliminary plan.
Yes.
Then you need to say it that way, but eliminate the RV parking area in order to go back to the original.
And include the sidewalks and the thirty-foot road and the amenities and X out the, the storage.
Yes, so those changes can be made and as far as coming back as a double check of, okay, making sure that we're following the preliminary plan approval, that could be done with the development agreement instead of bringing it back.
No, we don't, we certainly won't bring it back.
I like that. I like, you don't have to. So it's really about the RV parking that we're wanting? So we're keeping the thirty-foot wide road, we're keeping the sidewalk, we're just eliminating the RV parking.
I did make a motion, but we, I probably said it died because of no sack of.
I just said it died.
All right, I think I'm ready. You want me to swing for the? I got, I wrote it off as we went, I was planning ahead.
We'll let the freshman do it.
All right. If I box it, forgive me. I, I must, I.
Make a motion?
I make a motion to approve Spring Creek Townhomes subdivision plan based on the re, uh, approval of the preliminary plan with removal of the RV park, maintaining a thirty-foot road with sidewalks and final approval of plot plan will be administered by staff.
And include staff conditions.
And what?
Staff conditions.
And include staff conditions.
And, and did you see the amenity package?
I did, I did get the approved, approved, uh, preliminary amenity package. I had it in there, I thought.
There's a motion?
Did I get it?
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we need a roll call vote. Councilman Hyatt, Councilwoman Hyatt.
Aye.
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 Motion's passed at, at last.
Development done. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, the next one, number five. Uh, resolution to deferral agreement for Olson's Garden Shop Incorporated eleven ninety west, four hundred north. Turn some time over to Dave, Doug.
I'll be brief. Mayor, council, those of you who have been on the council before, Mr. Olson came in a little while ago. One of the concerns is there's been continued building of greenhouses and since he's been annexed, the, the curb and gutter hasn't been put, uh, sidewalk hasn't been put around his property. He came and addressed the council probably a couple of years ago. But in talking to Mr. Olson, he's willing to put that, um, the curb, curb gutter and sidewalk around his current establishment, but he wants to defer that so he can put twenty percent in per year for the next five, so in the, in the next five years, he'll have all the curb gutter and sidewalk in.
So he's gonna start now?
Yes, and I think, I, he's, 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 they're ready to issue some building permits to, to put some additional greenhouses up. He has looked at this agreement, he's, he's signed it, he's got the bond, ready to go, but we needed the council approval, so, um, he's asking that we defer the improvements based on the building permit that he'll be receiving, um, so that he can get them done in phases over time, but he's willing to do that. He also owns some property on the south that he's purchased. He, his intent is later this summer, he'll come in with a development proposal on that side. He understands he has to do the curb and gutter when that proposal comes in and he may do a little bit more of the other side when that project comes in. But the proposal now is the, the council would adopt a deferral agreement so that he can get his building permit to put some additional greenhouses up and start working on the process.
Council discussion?
Sam, uh, Kim just indicated that he got his permits today, so this would, we could give this deferral place.
I think this is a good idea because he's getting it done, but we're not killing all in one year, so he's agreed to get it done. It's been engineered to get done, so I agree with, to go along with it.
And I would assume that the area that he doesn't want to put that in is that main highway that doesn't have a lot of foot traffic anyway, so I, I don't have any problems with
Any, yeah, we, we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the deferral agreement for Olson's Garden Shop.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, a roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, number six, resolution adoption of facency organizational chart.
Mayor, council, we're just trying to update our processes a little bit. I, in your packet, we had the, the organizational chart that was adopted by the city council years ago. The, the proposed one is how things are being managed right now. So we, we're, we're asking the council to adopt the, I guess, the revised, um, city organizational chart. If you, if you looked at both of them, you notice there's, there's a, a place for an assistant city manager which we've never hired and, uh, so now we're proposing to move those under that position, under administration and, and just so that we have a clear chain of command, I guess, and how we address the, the council. So that's what we're asking the council to do. If you have any questions, we're happy to talk about or answer them.
A question I have is if in fact you do get a, a, an assistant in the future, that's something we can readdress very easily, right?
We'd probably come back with, with some changes.
There's a couple of questions. So Public Works and Development Services are under one person right now, is that correct?
Right now, you have the same person in, in those two blocks, so you wouldn't have to change the organizational chart, you just put a different name in it.
And administration, do we have a, who's over that? Who's that slot?
It, it's Sarah's position.
So with this, is the development, does this full chart require us to hire any new employees then? Cause we were, we've been talking about approving that person for developing, development services.
On the organizational chart, it's already split. We just have the same person, uh, over both of those. So if we got a new person for development services, that person would go in that development services name.
And it's pretty easy to fix. We just click and slide and say approve this.
The only, the only other thing Scott just pointed out, Scott Spencer, is that under fire, you've got CERT and that's really not a department or a program. It's, it's a program within that, so we'd probably take the CERT out.
Okay, I'm good with it. Anyone else? I would make a motion that we approve the organizational chart, removing CERT.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a second, uh, roll call vote. Councilwoman Hyatt?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Number seven, uh, be an ordinance, uh, facem business park project area dissolution.
This is, um, addressing our, um, organization that we put together, uh, twenty-some-odd years ago, um, establishing the business park as a, an entity where we could use the tax increment to put in roads and things like that. The effective life of that has, um, passed. A couple of years ago was the last time we received any increment and we're not eligible to receive any more increment, increment. The effectiveness has, has passed and a lot of cities, they just move on and don't dissolve it, but, um, the appropriate direction is to dissolve that. We'll be doing this twice tonight, once as city council passing an ordinance and then when we go into, um, economic development, we will be as a, as that board, passing a resolution that mirrors it. Um, and it dissolves the business park, um, economic development area. And the, um, documents indicate that there is, uh, and has been in place a zone, a business park. a business park zone that has been overlaid over that. So there's still a zone that governs it as far as, um, the requirements and the developments and things like that that have to go on, um, as, as businesses develop there.
Any conversation? I'll make a motion if there's no conversation.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion.
Unless there's somebody needs a question answered.
Okay, I would make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2018 dash O three oh seven, dissolving the Hason Business Park Economic Development Project Area. Is there a second?
Okay. It's about motion carries, Councilwoman Christensen, roll call. Roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Mayor, can I maybe indulge the council?
You bet.
Our next two items are discussions that we can have and need to have. I, what, what I'd like to do, if the council is agreeable to it, is if we could, uh, maybe suspend the agenda and move down to the RDA issues. We have, we have an individual here that was gonna meet with us. We have to have a short closed session. Now I think we could take care of the RDA issues and then we can come back into the regular session and have the discussion on the, uh, business park facilities and discussion on development priorities.
Okay, council, do, do we have a motion for that? I'd make a motion to suspend the agenda to, what, go into closed session?
We have to, we have to adjourn into an RDA, but.
To adjourn into RDA and have a brief.
End the agenda.
I make the motion to end the agenda. Is there a second?
Okay.
We need a second. Brian.
Brian. I don't think we need a roll call, do we need a roll call? That's all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Carries.
So now we just need to make a motion to go into an RDA.
Motion to go into RDA.
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
My motion carries.
And then we just, uh, have a quick closed session, so much to go to closed session, then we'll come back and take care of the RDA.
So we need to do more, a motion for that, right?
Yeah, yep.
Another motion, motion to go into closed session.
Second.
We discussing property? Okay, vote?
Yes, to discuss all property.
Okay, motion going to closed session.
We do need a roll call now.
Oh, roll call. Hold on. So I think it's Councilman, Councilwoman Hyatt? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries.